Ongoing and completed would be the final status that we've actually implemented that. Now, that still does not mean there's not work to do. We have to do a lot of work to maintain, refine, make sure all of those initiatives are continuing to run smoothly, that they're continuing to be effective. But essentially, this gives you a flavor of where we're at with the plan. You will notice sometimes you'll see two codes next to an initiative. If you see that, what that means is that status changed from January. So you'll see there are a few where we may have been implementing in January. Now, we're at the completed level. So that has been fully rolled out, so you can see the change. If you see one of those and they've been moved to completed, what that means is in coming years, they will be ongoing because they're things we're going to sustain and make sure they work. If you go to the very last page, you can see a percentage implementation by goal area. Keep in mind, this doesn't mean there's not work ongoing in each of these areas every year. There absolutely are, and just because an item's at 100%, it does not mean there's not refinement and work continuing. It just means we have those fully implemented and we're completed or ongoing in those areas. Again, a strategic plan is a marathon, not a sprint. So there are some areas that we had not yet begun implementation on, but we still have a few years on that, and we want to make sure we get things properly sequenced and properly laid out, so we don't want to rush into some of these as they're pretty big ticket items in many cases. So that's the update on the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions on it. Otherwise, remember, anytime that you want any of these highlighted in this area, we would be happy to do that for you. If you just give us enough notice, we can make sure that we talk through that. So I'll be happy to open up for any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Having to do with family engagement, community engagement, and culture and diversity.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd like to see those numbers a lot higher. What's the plan in place to do that? And you don't have to answer me now.
Sure.
You can just send me an email, tell me what we're doing.
Absolutely. We would be happy to do that, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. No, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir. There you go. All righty, we're going to scoot into old business, starting with Ms. Houston for policy revision DIB financial reports.
All right, I think that this has been on the table, and there's been no comments, so I think they can just move on to the next stage for approval. Yeah.
That's it?
That's it for that one.
We're good. All right, next. So do we need to vote on that one tonight?
No.
Okay. Add it to consent agenda?
Consent.
Everybody good with consent agenda?
Yep.
All righty, next.
So next will be the general fund budget. You will have to vote on this tonight because we do have to have a approved budget by June 30th, and this is the last time we're going to see each other as a group to vote. So this is our general fund budget, and we have had two public hearings as we are required on the budget. Approximately 10 people attended, and they were all very complimentary about the budget. They just wanted to talk more about the milage rate, and so I invited them back for the milage rate public hearings, and we have those later this week and next week. So the general fund budget that I'm asking you to approve is $185,818,765.
All right, we'll vote on that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next item is the other funds budget. So we went over the other funds budget at the public hearings also, and so I'll be asking you to approve the budgets for the special revenue, which is our federal programs and our school food nutrition programs, our capital projects fund, our debt service. The total will be $91,341,695.
Okay, we'll vote on that one too tonight.
And then milage rate will just sit there until our July 11th meeting to be voted on, and I'll have the three public hearings and report back to you at that point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had several folks ask me about our federal funds and exactly how much of our -- a percentage of our budget that constitutes. And I realize most of that is from the food nutrition area. Do we have a number on how much we actually -- how much that fund is, and then also how much more we get from the federal government in terms of percentage?
I don't have the percentage for you. I do have the exact amount that we are projecting that we're going to receive. It's $196,688,534, and I'll get you the percentage tomorrow.
And if you could tell me how much of that is actually for food nutrition, that'd be great. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, ma'am. Now, moving into new business, we will start with Mr. St. Clair, Infinite Campus Renewal.
John's not here, so I'm filling in for him. First up is our Infinite Campus Renewal. Since the initial purchase of it in the campus, the use of the product has evolved considerably with numerous modules and functionality added. In addition to the core product suite, we now have additional functions such as visitor check-in and badging, 504 planning and management, social worker activity, and referral modules, et cetera. Infinite Campus continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous school districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Infinite Campus is sold by the sole source provider, Infinite Campus, and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions. Because of the additional modules and the associated costs, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing the purchase and renewal of the product suite to the board for renewal approval. The financial impact is $229,611.20 out of the student information systems budget this year with a maximum yearly increase of 3% from the previous year. Superintendent's recommendation is authorization of the purchase of Infinite Campus software and associated modules from the sole source provider, Infinite Campus, and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions, in the amount of $229,611.20, and to authorize future renewals with a maximum yearly cost increase of 3% over the previous year.
All right, any questions? Consent agenda? All right, next.
Next up is our Munis contract renewal. Since the initial selection and purchase of the Munis financial system, the use of the product has evolved. In addition to the core product, we have several other modules over the years, such as employee self-service, fixed asset inventory, enterprise form processing, et cetera. We are currently running Munis on our district hardware in our data center. During this upcoming year, we'll be migrating that to the cloud-based solution for Munis hosted in their data centers. Munis continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Similar to Infinite Campus, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing this purchase and renewal of the product suite before the board for renewal approval. We are asking the board to approve continued purchase of Munis and associated modules for a cost of $159,499.72 this year with a future renewal starting at $141,000, with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is approval -- approving the renewal of the Munis financial systems for $159,499.72 this year and future authorizations for continuing years starting at $141,000 next year with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, next.
Next up is our Munis contract renewal. Since the initial selection and purchase of the Munis financial system, the use of the product has evolved. In addition to the core product, we have several other modules over the years, such as employee self-service, fixed asset inventory, enterprise form processing, et cetera. We are currently running Munis on our district hardware in our data center. During this upcoming year, we'll be migrating that to the cloud-based solution for Munis hosted in their data centers. Munis continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Similar to Infinite Campus, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing this purchase and renewal of the product suite before the board for renewal approval. We are asking the board to approve continued purchase of Munis and associated modules for a cost of $159,499.72 this year with a future renewal starting at $141,000, with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is approval -- approving the renewal of the Munis financial systems for $159,499.72 this year and future authorizations for continuing years starting at $141,000 next year with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Having to do with family engagement, community engagement, and culture and diversity.
Okay.
Obviously, I'd like to see those numbers a lot higher. What's the plan in place to do that? And you don't have to answer me now.
Sure.
You can just send me an email, tell me what we're doing.
Absolutely. We would be happy to do that, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, no, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir. There you go. All righty, we're going to scoot into old business, starting with Ms. Houston for policy revision DIB financial reports.
All right, I think that this has been on the table, and there's been no comments, so I think they can just move on to the next stage for approval. Yeah.
That's it?
That's it for that one.
We're good. All right, next. So do we need to vote on that one tonight?
No.
Okay. Add it to consent agenda?
Consent.
Everybody good with consent agenda?
Yep.
All righty, next.
So next will be the general fund budget. You will have to vote on this tonight because we do have to have a approved budget by June 30th, and this is the last time we're going to see each other as a group to vote. So this is our general fund budget, and we have had two public hearings as we are required on the budget. Approximately 10 people attended, and they were all very complimentary about the budget. They just wanted to talk more about the milage rate, and so I invited them back for the milage rate public hearings, and we have those later this week and next week. So the general fund budget that I'm asking you to approve is $185,818,765.
All right, we'll vote on that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next item is the other funds budget. So we went over the other funds budget at the public hearings also, and so I'll be asking you to approve the budgets for the special revenue, which is our federal programs and our school food nutrition programs, our capital projects fund, our debt service. The total will be $91,341,695.
Okay, we'll vote on that one too tonight.
Okay. And then milage rate will just sit there until our July 11th meeting to be voted on, and I'll have the three public hearings and report back to you at that point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had several folks ask me about our federal funds and exactly how much of our -- a percentage of our budget that constitutes. And I realize most of that is from the food nutrition area. Do we have a number on how much we actually -- how much that fund is, and then also how much more we get from the federal government in terms of percentage?
I don't have the percentage for you. I do have the exact amount that we are projecting that we're going to receive. It's $196,688,534, and I'll get you the percentage tomorrow.
And if you could tell me how much of that is actually for food nutrition, that'd be great. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, ma'am. Now, moving into new business, we will start with Mr. St. Clair, Infinite Campus Renewal.
John's not here, so I'm filling in for him. So first up is our Infinite Campus Renewal. Since the initial purchase of it in the campus, the use of the product has evolved considerably with numerous modules and functionality added. In addition to the core product suite, we now have additional functions such as visitor check-in and badging, 504 planning and management, social worker activity, and referral modules, et cetera. Infinite Campus continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous school districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Infinite Campus is sold by the sole source provider, Infinite Campus, and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions. Because of the additional modules and the associated costs, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing the purchase and renewal of the product suite to the board for renewal approval. The financial impact is $229,611.20 out of the student information systems budget this year with a maximum yearly increase of 3% from the previous year. Superintendent's recommendation is authorization of the purchase of Infinite Campus software and associated modules from the sole source provider, Infinite Campus, and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions, in the amount of $229,611.20, and to authorize future renewals with a maximum yearly cost increase of 3% over the previous year.
All right, any questions? Consent agenda? All right, next.
Next up is our Munis contract renewal. Since the initial selection and purchase of the Munis financial system, the use of the product has evolved. In addition to the core product, we have several other modules over the years, such as employee self-service, fixed asset inventory, enterprise form processing, et cetera. We are currently running Munis on our district hardware in our data center. During this upcoming year, we'll be migrating that to the cloud-based solution for Munis hosted in their data centers. Munis continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Similar to Infinite Campus, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing this purchase and renewal of the product suite before the board for renewal approval. We are asking the board to approve continued purchase of Munis and associated modules for a cost of $159,499.72 this year with a future renewal starting at $141,000, with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is approval -- approving the renewal of the Munis financial systems for $159,499.72 this year and future authorizations for continuing years starting at $141,000 next year with a maximum yearly increase of 3% of the previous year's cost going forward beyond that.
Any questions?
I do have a question about that. This year, we're looking for approval for $159,000 plus, and further authorization for continuing years starting at $141,000 with a maximum increase of 3%. Why is next year going to be cheaper than this year?
This year, there's additional costs because of the migrating the actual servers from being hosted in our data center to theirs, so you charge some fees for us to migrate that.
Okay.
We're the last to go totally digital.
Okay, good.
Pushed into it.
All right, consent agenda? All right, next.
All right, last one. At August 2nd, 2022 board meeting, the board authorized the purchase of Incident IQ Help Desk System for three years contingent upon a maximum price increase of 3% per year. The pricing of the software has remained within the 3% approved margin, increasing from $28,588 to $28,886. However, we have purchased two add-on modules to help with form management. For instance, if a student's checking out a device, the signed parental form associated with both the device and the student goes inside our Help Desk System to keep track of that, reviewed easily and printed. This has raised the overall cost of $35,917.46, so we are bringing this year's and next year's renewal back to the board for approval. We are asking the board to approve the purchase of Incident IQ Help Desk Software with all its associated modules for this year and next year, contingent upon the pricing next year not exceeding a 3% increase over this year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is authorizing the purchase of Incident IQ Help Desk Software from sole source provider Incident IQ in the amount of $35,917.46, and authorizing renewal next year contingent upon pricing remaining within 3% of this year's cost.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, thank you, sir.
All righty, Mr. Trunk with school nutrition dairy bids.
Good evening, and I have six bids that I'm asking for your approval, or school nutrition is asking for your approval tonight. The first one is the dairy bid, and as you can see, we only had one bid placed on it. It's the one that we're using currently, pet dairies. So there's that one. The next one is our fresh bread bid, and we only had one bid on that one also, and it's our current vendor we're using as well. The next one is our ice cream bid, and we had two companies bid on that, and one was the Hershey's Ice Cream Company, and then the other one is the Ice Cream Warehouse. And Hershey's was the lower-cost one at $54,476.80. And the next one is our paper supply, and we received three bids. One was incomplete, so it was an accepted. And the other two, Imperial Dade was the lowest cost at $682,847. Proteus is our next one, and Royal Food Service is the only ones that -- vendor that bid on us, and they're our current vendor, and we've used them for years. The reason you'll look, there's not a total bid price, is because if I was to put $108.25, y'all would look at me funny. But what Proteus does is they take the current market value each week, and then they add like 25 cents or a dollar a case or whatever, whatever the current marketed price is. Like, for example, we can get a case of apples, Granny Smith, and their bid price is $1.25, and each week they send us a market price, and this past week they were $43.50, and so they add $1.25. So if that looks kind of crazy to y'all, that's the reason for that. And then... Infinite Campus is sold by the sole source provider, Infinite Campus and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions. Because of the additional modules and the associated costs, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing the purchase and renewal of the product suite to the board for renewal approval. The financial impact is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents out of the student information systems budget this year with a maximum yearly increase of three percent from the previous year. Superintendent's recommendation is authorization of the purchase of Infinite Campus software and associated modules from the sole source provider, Infinite Campus and their Georgia partner, Cage World Solutions in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents and to authorize future renewals with a maximum yearly cost increase of three percent over the previous year.
All right, any questions? Consent agenda? All right, next.
Next up is our Munis contract renewal. Since the initial selection and purchase of the Munis financial system, the use of the product has evolved. In addition to the core product, we have several other modules over the years such as employee self-service, fixed asset inventory, enterprise form processing, et cetera. We are currently running Munis on our district hardware in our data center. During this upcoming year, we'll be migrating that to the cloud-based solution for Munis hosted in their data centers. Munis continues to be a solid product with excellent support that is used by numerous districts in Georgia and in our region. We are extremely satisfied with the product and company. Similar to Infinite Campus, as a matter of protocol, we are bringing this purchase and renewal of the product suite before the board for renewal approval. We are asking the board to approve continued, continued purchase of Munis and associated modules for a cost of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, forty, or yeah, forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents this year with a future renewal starting at one hundred and forty-one thousand with a maximum yearly increase of three percent of the previous year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is approval, approving the renewal of the Munis financial systems for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents this year and future authorizations for continuing, continuing years starting at one hundred and forty-one thousand next year with a maximum yearly increase of three percent of the previous year's cost going forward beyond that.
Any questions?
I do have a question about that. This year, we're looking for approval for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand plus and further authorization for continuing years starting at one hundred and forty-one thousand with a maximum increase of three percent. Why is next year gonna be cheaper than this year?
This year, there's additional costs because of the migrating the actual servers from being hosted in our data center to theirs, they charge some fees for us to migrate that.
Okay.
We're the last to go totally digital.
Okay, good.
Pushed into it.
All right, consent agenda? All right, next.
All right, last one. At August second, twenty twenty-two board meeting, the board authorized the purchase of Incident IQ help desk system for three years contingent upon a maximum price increase of three percent per year. The pricing of the software has remained within the three percent approved margin increasing from twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight to twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. However, we have purchased two add-on modules to help with form management. For instance, if a student's checking out a device, the signed parental form associated with both the device and the student goes inside our help desk system to keep track of that, reviewed easily and printed. This has raised the overall cost of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents. So we are bringing this year's and next year's renewal back to the board for approval. We are asking the board to approve the purchase of Incident IQ help desk software with all its associated modules for this year and next year contingent upon the pricing next year not exceeding a three percent increase over this year's cost. The superintendent's recommendation is authorizing the purchase of Incident IQ help desk software from sole source provider, Incident IQ in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents and authorizing renewal next year contingent upon pricing remaining within three percent of this year's cost.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Trunk with School Nutrition Dairy Bids.
Good evening, and I have six bids that I'm asking for your approval, or School Nutrition is asking for your approval tonight. The first one is the dairy bid. And as you can see, we only had one bid placed on it. It's the one that we're using currently, pet dairies. So there's that one. The next one is our fresh bread bid. And we only had one bid on that one also and it's our current vendor we're using as well. The next one is our ice cream bid. And we had two companies bid on that. And one was the Hershey's Ice Cream Company. And then the other one is Ice Cream Warehouse. And Hershey's was the lower cost one at fifty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. And the next one is our paper supply. And we received three bids. One was incomplete, so it wasn't accepted. And the other two, Imperial Dade was the lowest cost at six hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Proteus is our next one. And Royal Food Service is the only ones that, vendor that bid on us and they're our current vendor and we've used them for years. The reason, you'll look, there's not a total bid price is because if I was to put a hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents, y'all would look at me funny. But what Proteus does is they take the current market value each week and then they add like twenty-five cents or a dollar a case or whatever, whatever the current marketed price is. Like for example, we can get a case of apples, Granny Smith, and their bid price is a dollar twenty-five. And each week they send us a market price. And this past week, they were forty-three fifty. And so they add a dollar twenty-five. So if that looks kinda crazy to y'all, that's the reason for that. And then our large equipment bid, we have quite a bit, um, equipment that we're purchasing this year that hasn't been replaced in over twenty years. We have five milk coolers, a dishwasher. We have twelve cold pass-throughs, eight hot pass-throughs, an oven and a holding and proofing cabinet that is needed. We received four bids with Owen, the Owens, um, equipment. They bid the lowest at three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and four dollars. And that's all we have.
Does that include the kitchen for the new elementary school?
I'm sorry, what?
Does that include the equipment for the new elementary school?
No, ma'am. That was included.
I'm surprised more people don't bid on these things. I mean, how much time, you know, when we, when we put them out on the, how do we advertise for this? Just through our website?
Our website and then the, um, the Georgia, there's a Georgia website that all these vendors have access to.
It's the Georgia procurement website. We put it down there and every time that we put something out there, whatever vendors that could qualify for that, they get an email saying, Barrow County School System, just put a bid out there if you're interested. And so they get notified.
Right.
And we put it out there for a minimum of five days, but sometimes up to three weeks.
I'm just surprised more people wouldn't try to be getting the business, you know?
With School Food Nutrition, she's had a hard time getting vendors.
Yeah.
We used to use Gold Star.
No, we used to use U.S. Foods.
U.S. Foods, and they quit bidding on us. They, they don't even bid on school systems anymore except for like Gwinnett County. It's just not worth their time apparently.
So a year ago, it was awful because we couldn't find a food distributor.
Like Cisco or any of those?
Uh-uh, they won't, they don't take the time anymore with school districts.
Interesting, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I have a question about the pet dairy bid, which was the only one submitted. How much did we spend on dairy products last year, do you know? And if you don't know, that's fine. I know this is coming out of the blue. If you can just get back to me on that, that'd be great.
I sure can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I guess this is probably a question for down the road. What's gonna happen if you find that everybody just gets this interested in you?
Stops bidding?
And that what?
We're gonna be going.
I'll tell you this, my husband told me a year ago when we had a hard time finding a food distributor, he said, "Just go to Sam's and get it." I'm like, "You don't understand how much food we go through."
Yeah, exactly.
We can't go to Sam's. So hopefully, we don't ever have to cross that bridge.
Well, hopefully.
All righty, guys, so we are gonna need to add these all to the consent agenda. We'll just go down them. So we've got the school nutrition, we got the dairy bid, the bread bid, ice cream bid, paper supply bid, Proteus bid and large equipment bid. Is everyone good with adding all of those bids to the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. McNamara with the policy revision J G C D medication.
I'm still getting used to being called Mr. McNamara. Usually just Coach Mac, or in the case may be something.
I'll do better next time. Coach Mac.
A little more comfort there. Got a policy revision, J G C D medication. This past legislative session adopted a House Bill four forty related to stocking undesigned ready-to-use glucagon and Senate Bill forty-five related to seizure action plans for students with epilepsy. These minor changes to the current policy are to incorporate the passage of these laws. Our current policy and these suggested updates would align the sample policy distributed by the Georgia School Boards Association. Therefore, the superintendent recommends placing the policy J G C D medication on the table for public review until the next scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. So attached, you see a copy of the draft. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Consent agenda?
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All righty, Ms. Wadley, Soliant Health Speech Services.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. So we all know that our population has exploded in Barrow County and just as our student population has grown, so has our need for speech-language services. And our ability to find qualified SLPs to serve our students is very challenging. There's a really high demand and very low supply. So because of that, our district has worked with staffing companies in the past to locate qualified SLPs to work with our students. And so right now, we have one point seven five SLP positions that are currently unfilled, which equates to about seventy hours a week of service for our students. So at this time, Soliant Health has been able to secure one SLP to provide these services on a part-time basis, but not to exceed twenty-five hours per week. This company is currently actively looking for additional SLPs to complete our allotment for this upcoming school year. So in order to meet the needs of our students with disabilities who require speech-language services, we do need to contract with Soliant Health in order to meet that federal requirement. The financial impact, so the general fund budget does account for the, the cost of this. And it's, like I already said, one point seven five SLP positions at a rate of seventy-four dollars an hour for one hundred and ninety, um, contract days for a maximum cost of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. So again, as I said, there's one SLP who is available to provide up to twenty-five services per week for a hundred and ninety days. And for that particular person, it would be a max of seventy thousand, three hundred dollars. And this hourly wage is at or the ongoing rate for SLPs in our area. The superintendent recommends that Barrow County School System enter into a contract with Soliant Health to provide speech services for Barrow County's special education students for up to one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars per year. And the contract will renew yearly as long as we are satisfied with the services and the cost does not increase more than four percent each year. Do y'all have any questions for me?
So how many students are we currently serving or do we anticipate serving next year?
So right now, I would have to look back to get the precise numbers for you. But students receiving speech and language services, that's the vast portion of our students who are served in special education. Um, I, I want to say it's around a thousand, but I, I don't wanna give you the wrong number. I can send that to you.
Okay. Rough is fine, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how much it's costing us for students to do this.
Yes.
So.
Okay, I'll make a note and send you that.
Thank you. And I'm seeing a pattern here of either three or four percent increases on everything we're being asked to approve here. Are we gonna bring these back before the board just for, as a matter of, of information issue? So we know what it's costing us? Can we do that?
That, that's what everybody's trying to avoid. As long as it stays, if y'all approve this contract, then if it only goes up by the consumer price index, you know, three percent or something like that, they're hoping they don't have to bring it back every year until the, you know, they say three or five years, until it gets too expensive and then they wanna bring it back.
Okay, my, my concern is I'd just really like to know how many students we're serving every year with this money? And I don't have a problem with a three or four percent increase, given what inflation's doing right now. But after a period of time, we need to really see these numbers again for budgetary processes.
Okay, we'll talk about it and we'll see what you guys want and we'll.
Now, those would also come in with, you give, we give the, well, what we did earlier, the what you've spent in certain areas over the twenty-five thousand? I mean, would those be listed every year?
I could.
In that?
Yeah, I could get with the directors and they could just send me a list of all the contracts that you've already approved.
Yeah.
And then the amount.
Probably the easiest way to just keep up, that way the board can keep up with it.
We can go back and ask about the students being served.
Yeah, we can get your student counts.
That'd be great.
Is it hard to recruit people for this job? I mean, are there a lot of people who do this position?
It is difficult and especially at this time. The closer that we get to the start of the school year, SLPs are already under contract in other places. So, you know, considering how close we are to the new year starting, it's very challenging.
A lot of them go into private practice too.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
A lot go into private practice out there.
Oh, yes, and private practice, they can work in hospitals. They have so many other opportunities outside of the school system. Right, and we do, we partner with universities and we, we ask for all the interns that we can get. And, you know, that's why we've been able to secure, like, we have an allotment right now of, um, let's see, twenty point two five SLPs. So, you know, the fact that we only need one point seven five is pretty good considering. But, you know, that's a lot of service hours that we won't be able to provide our students if we can't fill this one point seven five allotment.
Are the ones we have on the teacher salary schedule? Or are they on a separate schedule?
They're, they're paid differently.
Okay.
We also have some billable, don't we?
Yes, so they can generate Medicaid funds as long as parents consent to that. And that's, we have the contract through SES, PattyNet, where they enter their, their billable hours and we get reimbursement for that. So, you know, this is a process that we're very serious about. We work with our SLPs on and we monitor closely so that we get that reimbursement. And this year, that money was significantly more than it was last year. So it's, it's a good kind of give and take.
So let me make sure I understand this. We're looking for seventy hours a week and we found twenty-five?
Correct, we only have twenty-five right now. But through this company, they're still looking and we hope to be able to fill the one point.
Okay, now, if I understand it correctly, these students will have written that they're supposed to get this and if we can't, if we can't come up with the, what is it, forty-five hours, whatever it is, what do we do?
So at that point in time, we have to get very creative with our schedules. We have to look to see if there's any SLPs who, let me back up for a minute. There's also a process where some older students go through evaluation processes and they may no longer qualify. And so that might free up a little bit of time. So, but, but coming into the school year, that, that's definitely the need. Um, and we're growing, we're building an additional elementary school, so that plays a big factor. SLPs are much more involved in that elementary school. And so that's, our, our big concern is getting all of that covered.
Well, I've been on the board for a little while and this is nothing new.
Right.
We've gone through this for years.
We're always struggling to find that SLPs and get that filled, you know?
Now, you said something about if the parents agree, we can get the Medicaid.
Yes.
How, what percentage of them agree to do the?
I cannot give you an exact number, but, you know, just from reading through and seeing, I mean, I, I feel like a good majority do agree. But there's a nice chunk that they don't agree because they do worry that if, let's say their child receives private services on a Tuesday afternoon and the SLP also saw their child on a Tuesday at school and they bill for that, then they worry it could, um, impact their insurance. And so sometimes there's just a, a fear that if we don't plan it outright, that they're gonna end up coming more out of pocket for the private therapy. But typically, that does not happen. And if there's a concern, we can always work together with the family to ensure that those services don't overlap on the same day. But there's some parents who just, they, they just don't wanna get involved or, or do it for whatever reason, they're adamant.
Is Soliant Health the only staffing company that would provide that?
They are not. It's just Soliant is a staffing company we've worked with for quite some time and we've had a really good relationship with them.
I mean, in some of the meetings, there was at least a couple of groups that would like come up and give me their, you know, hey, you know, Kelly and a few of these, maybe we should try.
I've reached out to the Clark County Special Education Director to ask her, some, some different companies that they've worked with that were really good. And so we have gotten in touch with one of those. I've emailed that contract to Ms. Houston, Dr. Moten, and they've looked at that. And so I just wasn't able to get everything together in time to present that to you guys here. But I do plan on getting a few other things together so that we have multiple staffing companies looking for SLPs. I mean, I, I hope that, that this will work and Soliant will just magically get these one point seven five allotments filled for us. But if they do not, um, I'll be back at that next board meeting talking with you all about these other staffing companies and what they could maybe do for us.
Got it.
All righty, consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, Mr. Purno, Job Order Contracting Program.
Good evening. We're asking the superintendent to recommend use of Georgia Department of Administrative Services. Job Order Contracting Services Program is managed by Gordian for potential repair, renovation or new construction projects. Use of this program would be confined to system operations for a one-year period. A one-year exemption from Policy DJED and Regulation DJED R two, bids in quotations, is also recommended in conjunction with use of Gordian by system operations. And I just wanna speak for a moment to the rationale behind this. Our capital improvement program is focusing on, on those big projects out there, new schools, renovations, major upgrades. And our maintenance department, their primary focus is maintaining our buildings and grounds. And so at times, we have a need for small to medium-sized projects that we need to accomplish for the schools, to support the schools. And sometimes these things tend to fall in the cracks. They don't really fit into either one of those, those categories of a major capital improvement or M and O. And so we still wanna be able to provide support to the schools and we believe that this is a way to do that. Briefly, the Department of Administrative Services solicited proposals from companies to manage this program and Gordian was selected to do that. And DOAS also solicited bids from eighty contractors. Ultimately, twenty-four were chosen to provide contracting services. Gordian has a construction task catalog based on regions within the state and it assigns numbers to everything from labor, supplies, materials on over two hundred and seventy-five thousand items. So I'm saying that to say that there is competition here. I think sometimes when we think state contract, we just, it's one single thing and it's really not that in, in, in this situation here, there's competition. Uh, we reached out to Georgia Department of Transportation, Dalton State University, City of Roswell. They all use this program and speak highly of it. We feel like it aligns with our strategic plan, strategically managing system growth and ensuring equitable distribution of resources by maintaining and improving processes for operational excellence, customer service and shared accountability. To give you an example, the, the kind of projects we're talking about, and, and I don't know all of them, we'll be faced with some that we're not even aware of at this time. But this could be pouring a sidewalk. This could be building a wall in an office, you know, to create two offices. This could be reconfiguring locker room space to, to make more room for our middle school football program. So these are some examples of those kind of things that just don't fit neatly into kind of the day-to-day things that we're doing in our other areas of construction and, and M and O. Any questions?
Yep, consent agenda? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, our next item here is for parking lot striping, sealing and improvements. We're asking the superintendent to recommend contracting with the surface masters for necessary parking lot repairs. The bulk of this scope of work would be filling in cracks and seal coating and striping the parking and drive areas at Russell Middle School and Wynder Elementary School. Uh, but we did also establish unit cost and receive pricing per unit cost to help us with other improvement needs that we might have. Uh, we've got some asphalt repair that needs to be performed elsewhere. But, but again, that main focus is Russell and Wynder. If you recall, we, we did the other campuses several years ago. But these were newer facilities. facilities and we didn't need to do them at that time.
So, Wynder's not that old, right? How long have we had that school? Or am I wrong here? Time flies when you're having fun.
I know. Uh, I think we're, we're going on six or seven years.
Six.
Really?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Time flies when you're having fun.
That's right. I was just, I saw that and I wondered why we needed to be repairing that because I didn't think it was that old, but if it's that old, I guess we have...
Yeah, there aren't, yeah, there aren't as many cracks in, in that parking lot there or Russell for that matter. There are probably some, but I think more of that is a lot of the striping and directional arrows are faded, you know, and so, you know, you want to give that a good, good background with a dark color and seal the asphalt to protect it as well and then get the striping done on top of that. But, but there are some, some cracks and other imperfections out there we need to address.
Okay.
Any other questions? You missed a bit on that one tonight. See how it gets working?
Please, that'd be great. Thank you.
You sure will, thanks, sir.
Sure.
All righty, Ms. Houston, BASSA band equipment.
All right, um, since BASSA opened, they have expanded their band classes as their grade levels increase, which created the need for additional instruments. Most of these will be for their higher-level symphonic band classes. The district promised to expand their instruments when the school included twelfth grade and that's happening. So, this will, um, this will allow us to fulfill the promise that we made to BASSA. Um, a request for bids was submitted and we have four respondents. Recommendations are based on the best-priced, most durable product, uniformity of products, and timeliness of delivery. So, the superintendent recommends accepting the highlighted price per line item on the below bid tabulation for band instruments at BASSA. Total cost will be thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars paid out of capital projects.
Okay, any questions? Consent? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this next one, um, the Georgia Department of Education letter. Uh, the superintendent recommends approving the attached letter to Georgia DOE in response to the finding in fiscal year 2022 financial statement audits. The finding has been resolved by mending the contracts with our custodial contractors, which you have done over the past few months. There is no penalty or payback of funds. Um, please see the attached letter from Chris Toll's with Georgia Department of Education, which states that the finding is revol- resolved and closed. State Bill sixty-eight requires the Board of Education to approve and sign our corrective action plan, which has already been corrected, and submitted to, and submit it to the Georgia DOE by July thirtieth. So, the corrective action plan is attached for you to review and each one of you will need to sign it and we need to get it over to the Georgia DOE by July thirtieth.
All right, consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Moten, instructional resources for Austin Road.
I have, uh, four items coming up. Items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen will be presented by Ms. Tommy Royal and then items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two will be presented by Dr. Peter Jones.
Good evenings. Um, Austin Road Elementary, uh, with its opening, we wanted to get the resource materials that the other nine elementary schools have. So, those first two items are kind of, kind of, um, fit that for us and, um, make sure they have what they need. Um, the first one is Benchmark Phonics Literacy, um, and that has the Word Study Kits and all of that for K through five. Um, also, um, the second one has the Heinemann Literacy Resources with the units of study, um, the guided reading books, those types of things, and some professional learning resource books that we have at all the other schools that we have used, um, as well. So, both of those, um, we'll put them in line and they'll have the same literacy, um, instructional materials that the other nine elementary schools have. Any questions about those? All right, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of the literacy instructional resource materials from Benchmark Education and from Heinemann, um, for the newest elementary school.
All right, consent agenda? All right, thank you.
The next one is our universal screener that we use with our K through three students. It's on a platform called Amplify, um, and we use the Dibbles Eight. We have two schools who are doing the L, L four GA grant. They give the Dibbles Next, which is not, well, they do have it on this platform, but with L to four GA, they want them to use a different platform. So, they are the only two schools that are not on this platform, so that's why it says eight elementary schools. We give the Dibbles Eight, um, to all K through three students. And then for the TRC, that is a running record assessment that allows teachers to assess students foundational skills, which are necessary to be fluent readers and to listen to them read, um, and score, um, their readings. Um, and that we use with, um, K through three as well. Some of the schools have elected to purchase their own for four and five, um, but as far as the school system, we do that for K through three. And then, like I said, the, um, two school, two elementary schools who pur- have to purchase with grant funds, um, for the Dibbles Next. But the Dibble, uh, Dibbles Eight is a universal screener for us. Now, part of that that comes with it is the dyslexi- the Now What Tools and the Dyslexia Screener. Um, the Now What Tools takes the results that you get from the Dibbles Eight, um, and the TRC, and it gives the teachers instructional things they can do with the students, um, to differentiate instruction for them, to help them to be able to do better on the test for the next full round. Um, we do that three times a year. Um, and then that, it also has three dyslexia screeners that we're going to be able to use as the legislation has been rolling out. Um, we're going to use those, um, as part of that, um, and that'll give us a good next year, um, using those screeners to see if that's what we want to stay with, um, as we roll out all of the dyslexia information. Any questions about those?
Our only question is, since we went through this, are y'all seeing positive results?
Um, this is, like you said, an assessment tool. Um, you know, with COVID hitting, um, and not making any excuses, but we kind of went, you know, back some, um, but we're now starting to see some growth, um, with the students. Um, we do a lot of progress monitoring in between giving the assessment. Um, so you do some things with the students and work with them instructionally and then you progress monitor to see if they're making results. And our EIP teachers have been progressing monitoring with Dibbles and then sharing that information with the classroom teachers so that they're working together to try to help those students make progress.
Are any of these students being, um, serviced by our interventions?
Yes, probably so.
Okay.
Probably so.
Sorry, consent agenda? All right, thank you.
Um, and then the last one is MyOwn. Um, MyOwn was a lifesaver when we had to go, um, digital learning. Um, this is a platform that has personalized literacy environment online, so it provides digital books, um, for students. It has over seven thousand digital books online for students that they can, um, go in line. You can do it with internet access, but you can also do it where you, um, if you're, it's lagging or, or those kinds of things, you can also do it offline. Um, so it is there, um, seven days a week. Kids can use it at any point, um, as long as they can log in. And, um, it bases it off of the student's interest and their reading level. So, they do a little assessment when they go on and then it gauges what their interests are and tries to provide books that are in those areas of interest. Um, and it also looks at their reading level and gives them appropriate books for those levels. It also has an, um, audio where it will read to children, um, if they want to listen to the book, um, as well. But, um, this was a real lifesaver because a lot of our kids would not have had books in their homes, um, had it not been for using MyOwn. Now, a lot of the teachers will use it in center time and allow kids to go over and they'll assign books to kids that they're supposed to listen to and read. Um, and they will, um, get on the laptop and access those.
And the financial impact on this, the cost, was that, I didn't see it on the, maybe you missed it.
I'm sorry, say that again?
How much is this costing us?
Oh, it's fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, my daughter, when she was really young, had a very high reading level. Um, is there any way to kind of make sure that the books are age-appropriate even if the child is at a very high level of reading?
Um, yes, I do believe, um, I know that teachers can control what, what they're reading as well. So, I think, you know, if they, if she was moving on up in the levels, then the teacher would be able to monitor that and go anywhere.
Make sure they weren't reading books that weren't her degree of age.
Right, right. Yeah, but if a child picks a scary book or something like that, then of course the teacher will be able to say, no, we're not going to read that at this, you know, that's not appropriate.
And the teacher knows what they're reading.
Yes, they can see that.
Okay.
All righty, consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Jones.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well this evening. Um, I've got three things to present to you tonight for your consideration. Uh, the first is a program that you are most likely familiar with and that is our OpenUp Resources Math Program. Um, last fall, we came, I am to you to ask you to authorize payment for Algebra One. Um, this, uh, coming year, we'll be rolling up Geometry, which is the next in sequence. Um, and so, this, uh, particular, um, item is to buy workbooks for both Algebra and Geometry, as well as several teacher editions, um, for both middle school and, um, for some of our high school classes. And, um, last year, you actually, um, already approved fifty thousand of this number that you're seeing, um, but because of growth, um, it came in above fifty thousand and so that's why we're bringing that piece back to you this evening. So, the tot- uh, total financial impact would be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars to be paid for CARES, uh, from CARES SIR funds. Uh, so the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of OpenUp Geometry Student Workbooks and Teacher Editions, Algebra One Student Workbooks and Teacher Editions, OpenUp Math Teacher Editions for grades six through eight, and additional teacher additions for Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two from OpenUp Resources for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year and future years. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to...
I have a question about the future years. These are workbooks, so is the hundred and twenty-seven, one fifty-four for just one year or is this going to be a recurring?
Yeah, this, so this is, um, one-year purchase. Um, however, like the teacher's editions will not be an ongoing. It is related to get them, um, some, uh, initial resources for them to use. And then, as I'll describe in a few minutes, um, we're actually looking at an alternative cost-saving measure, um, to, to move forward. So, our plan really is for us to be able to use our OpenUp Resources from OpenUp Resources for the first and second years of implementation. And then we hope to, after that, move to a printed resource, um, packet. And I'm going to tell you about that in just a minute because that's what we're going to experiment with this year with, um, middle school. And some of our teachers have wanted to, um, early adopt the Algebra Two curriculum and so, we're also going to print those to see how well that works in the high school level. So, um, while this may be ongoing for, um, a limited amount of time, we anticipate that this number will be, um, much less than this, uh, once we get past those two years per subject area.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda?
Great, the second item I have for your consideration, um, is the purchase of a web-based, um, assessment tool called Formative. We actually have used this this year in grades six through eight, um, and it has been well-received by our teachers and our students. Um, basically, what it allows our teachers to do is build formative, um, quizzes and tests and things like that. And so, they immediately have, uh, access to the data they need to serve the individual student needs. Um, so this year, we're asking to, um, go ahead and move towards six through twelve implementation. So, all of our high school teachers, um, will have access to the same tool and thus our kids will have continuity from six to twelve in terms of that online, uh, platform. And so, um, the purchase involves both licensing and what's known as a lockdown browser. The lockdown browser prevents students from cheating. And so, that's, uh, polling our teachers, they said that was a very critical item for them and so we included that in this, uh, purchase. So, the total expenditure would be sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars from CARES SIR funds. And so, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Formative Gold licenses for all students, teachers, and administrators in grades six through twelve, along with access to the locked browser option. And we're also, um, bringing in the folks from Formative to have, uh, professional learning support, uh, for this year and, uh, for future years. Formative, uh, is a sole source provider and you should have that information available if you wish to look at it. I'll be happy to answer questions if you've got any. It's a really cool tool. I wish I would have had it when I was teaching.
Consent agenda?
I can imagine if our students would cheat.
Oh, I know. It's, it's hard, you know, occasionally, every, every once in a while. It might be tempted.
Consent?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. And the final item, um, is the one that I referred, uh, to earlier, uh, in the previous presentation and these are, um, purchasing, um, the printing of workbooks, uh, from a local printer. We, um, investigated several different options, uh, for printing, um, and this came back, um, not only, um, the cheapest, but also the quickest. Uh, it's a company called Willco Printing. And so, what we're doing with these is, as I mentioned, we're going to print the middle school math, uh, uh, resources for them, right? This is also allowing us to customize that set. So, when we buy from OpenUp, we're getting, you know, the, the printed resources from them. Our math content specialists have been working with our teachers to customize some of the content in the middle school, uh, packets because, um, of the curriculum changes. And so, uh, we're also including in this, uh, purchase Algebra Two. Uh, as I mentioned, there are some teachers that really want to adopt it and so we're excited to be able to support them in that work. Um, and so, uh, some of this purchase will go towards Algebra Two workbooks. Um, most likely, next year, we'll be coming, uh, to you with a larger number because this isn't all of our teachers that are doing the Algebra Two. But, um, we're hoping that this will be a sustainable model for saving money. Um, this will be a good litmus test for that and I feel confident that this is going to be a, a solution that will be, um, you know, cost-effective and also instructionally effective. So, uh, the, the total expenditure for, for this particular purchase is sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents from CARES SIR funds. Uh, the superintendent recommends authorizing Willco Printing to print OpenUp Resources sixth through eighth grade, math workbooks, and OpenUp Resources Algebra Two Student Workbooks for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and for future years.
Any questions?
I take it there's no copyrighting issues here?
There are not. Um, OpenUp Resources, you can actually go on their page and download all of their stuff for free. Um, and some of our teachers were doing that, but they were printing them themselves, which is not a cost-effective way to use our copy machines and that's why we looked, um, to a, a vendor to do that at a cheaper copy, uh, price.
I believe we've used Willco Printing before, haven't we?
Uh, I can't speak to that because I've only been here a short amount of time, but they are a local, uh, group that does a lot of printing for the school systems around this area.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Dr. Moten?
Thank you. I have the last two items here. Under K and M Literacy for Bear Creek Middle School and Russell Middle School, English Language Arts Teachers from all middle schools worked with Ms. Roberts in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to design standards-based units of study with accompanying learning progressions to track students' attainment of the unit learning goals. Bear Creek and Russell would like to build on this work by contracting with K and M Literacy to provide continued professional learning for English Language Arts teachers that includes classroom modeling and observations with feedback. If approved, the schools will use their L four GA grant funds to provide professional learning for English Language Arts teachers on July nineteenth of this year. Follow-up support will be provided through multiple full-day site visits throughout the remainder of the school year. The professional learning activities will help teachers promote student growth and reading comprehension through designing and delivering effective mini-lessons and differentiated support for students through small group lessons and individual conferences. The proposed learning activities support district and individual school improvement goals as well as the school's L four GA grant goals. K and M Literacy is a sole source provider of this professional learning service. The professional learning will be designed to support the specific needs of Bear Creek and Russell students and their teachers. The professional learning will be designed to support the specific needs of Bear Creek and Russell students and their teachers. The financial impact is $50,000, and each school's L4GA grants will be used for this purpose. Therefore, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of contracted services up to $50,000 with K&amp;M Literacy for professional learning with author and national literacy consultant Kate Roberts.
Questions? Do we need to approve this one sooner, so they have more than a week to prayer?
Yeah.
Prepare for that.
If possible, that would be greatly appreciated, since it is July 19th of this year.
Okay. We'll put on it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Northwest Evaluation Association Measures of Academic Progress, also known as NWEA. The MAP Growth is an assessment tool used for measuring achievement and growth in K-12 math, reading, and language usage. Administered three times per school year, MAP Growth is an interim assessment that provides a measure of students' academic growth along with the learning continuum of skills during the school year and between school years. MAP data allows schools to differentiate and adjust instruction for individual students, groups of students, or entire classes based on the results of the assessment. Teachers and administrators can access a variety of group reports measuring students' growth and proficiency. There is a quote that is attached there for your review. The financial impact for MAP Growth, K-12, for 9,737 students at $13.50 per student is $131,449.50. And this will be from CARES SIR funds. Therefore, the superintendent recommends authorizing the renewal of the NWEA MAP Growth K-12 Assessment License for the 23-24 school year.
Please let's put that on the consent agenda and get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Probably the best thing to do.
Yes, it is.
For students.
Yes, it is.
All right, at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 All righty, if you guys will give us the room for a few minutes.